They're not showing anything? Here it says we can't. Okay. There maybe is. Let's start recording, I'll go. All right, I'd like to call the town of Colonial Beach Planning Commission, um, regular March meeting Thursday, March 23rd, 11:15 order at 5:34 PM. First off, we're gonna approval of the agenda. How about motion to adjourn to amend the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add, um, people forcing to request a, um, you know, like how they can add to.
All in favor of approving the agenda as amended?
Aye.
I'm in. What would I comment on? Planning Commission matters not on the agenda. I'm gonna thank everybody for attending the meeting today. If there's anything... It's fine, it's good. Um, wait, if there's anybody, um, would like to speak on a matter that's not already in the agenda, don't mind. None, I will leave this place to private time. All right, approval of the minutes of regular meeting has February 2nd and February 23rd. Yeah, the agenda is fine. Motion to approve minutes of...
No, I... 23rd or 24th?
The second, the second and the 23rd.
And who said comments?
Okay, so let's just do the second. Don't worry. You guys come and help. Okay. So, um, approval of the minutes for February 2nd meeting has written on favor.
Aye.
So, next is the February 23rd meeting.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so for the February 23rd, I will open this discussion. Um, on page, little page number, on page four, I think, as I'm at the last page. Um, oh, yeah, um, and what there's a part of, we were talking about adding the commission and I couldn't understand this, so. This chick would like to take out a bench with listing current conditions with structure of the town. She said it was important to note that the current style of development of the town shouldn't be vacated with the inclusion of affordable housing. That we should... That's correct. They needed, yeah, that's correct. Uh, because that we should maybe be considerate of the style we have now and that we shouldn't necessarily amend it in order to sell it. Okay. I just couldn't understand it for that way, okay? Thank you. Should I need to change this?
Yes, under section seven, item seven, in the middle of that next page, uh, where it's Mr. Music stated that he appears including a portable housing, it become a magnet that was looking for a portable housing, rather he'd like to look for creative turnip or house. Um, I guess in my remarks, and as I guess, um, I didn't say that I thought we could come back and put in C P a portable housing. I just said that, that, uh, the type of a portable housing that I would prefer not be the type like where it's like terrace and that goes into later goes into your point about other alternative that don't make me the style of architecture that we have in town. I didn't say that I felt that it's too big, uh, it's nice or it wasn't this type, but not that we necessarily would be providing a portable housing that obviously would magnet for everybody in the meantime.
Do you want to strike that?
Um, I think that would, that probably would be true. And it's, they're not really for being minutes anyway, so.
That's fine, I think it's a sentence that...
Yeah.
There from what point, what point?
Uh, just starting with Mr. Music stated.
It says third paragraph. And then end with...
For, uh, for alternative portable housing.
Did you just want?
Two steps.
Okay. It's pretty simple stated that he hears that he's reading a portable housing, it become a magnet for the, and then the second sentence, rather, oh, the rather of.
Well, we, I can have a seat.
He did keep, he'd like to look for creative ways of culture in Australia. Just ready for a topic. The sense of being competitive is what people... Yeah, when you did, um, one thing. Um, there's a motion to accept the minutes amended. Okay. There. Uh, aye.
Aye.
February of the interview with Mr. Daniel with his office. So. I'm gonna start by just interviewing him a little bit, a little bit of your, um, somebody with your background.
Background, okay. I'm Dan Kossler. Uh, my background, I graduated from North Carolina State. I did grow up in Prince William County, uh, spent some time around the world within Texas, North Carolina, of course, for college and a little bit of Germany as an exchange. Uh, however, I've spoken German over 20 years, so don't try it. Um, my background is in actually agricultural studies, probably what my specialty is. I have spent time to move up here from Tadwell, Virginia, and for those who don't know where that's at, it's kind of in the arrowhead, top of the arrowhead of Virginia, right in the close to the West Virginia line between, uh, Tennessee and Kentucky, right, all right here together. Uh, there I spent the time on the Southwest Virginia Agricultural Committee for Tadwell County. I was the Ag Business Chair. I've been, uh, in management about my whole career. I was manager with Southern States Co-op and that's down in the area where I started and, uh, they moved me up in this direction. But, uh, down there, and for those who are not familiar with that committee, I think sort of first word, but we kind of gave our information to lobbyists in Washington DC for agricultural interests and what were the best. Everybody, we work as a team, come up, vote on the best ideas to send to the entire Southwest Committee and then from there we meet and then send those ideas to Washington. Um, in a nutshell, that's, that's what that occurred. Uh, since then, now, now I work locally in Colonial Beach. I actually cover a district from Orange County down to the Jame Draper Williamsburg as a fertilizer territory and a future management planner for the state of Virginia and a pesticides applicator for the state of Virginia commercial.
And your experience, you live in Colonial Beach?
I have lived in Colonial Beach for about three and a half years. Uh, I have to admit, I don't have any experience, of course, with, with the town itself, working, you know, with council or anything like that. I'm not aware of anything behind the scenes that I don't know about. Um, so I don't really have any experience with the town, working with the town.
But you've been here three and a half years?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I was impressed with the whole go down, uh, I'll give that. Um, first, then, one of the questions that we asked earlier, and there's a new, uh, tech, and your program course, planning commission, it's, uh, ten weeks and over a weekend and then at home course and you go ahead, um, you've already been able to deal with...
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, second is, uh, what is your view for the town of Colonial Beach where you see it happening?
I see it growing, actually. Um, see a lot of even the older houses coming down and newer houses going up. Uh, saw this improvement out here at the intersection and pedestrian walkway over there last year, I think it was. Uh, so I see, I see growing improvement. I see outside interest from other areas buying property. Uh, so all I can say is improvement.
Where do you see, um, Colonial Beach as lacking or is there some involvement in this?
I would say first sidewalks, because I trip on one boundary, but, um, I'd, I'd really have to look and see as far as anything on paper, wha- what you can do to improve first, uh, as far as looking at something and saying it needs fixed. You know, just physically, you know, you can say sidewalks might need fixed, water might need fixed. Um, so that's where I can say physically looking with my eye.
And what is, um, sparked your interest in this? You have this agricultural background to get involved with the commission, um, what would really spark your interest in?
Well, it's her fault, number one. Um, but no, I, I, uh, I have interest in anywhere in the place I live. So I served on the, the Ag Committee in Southwest Virginia, because I not only dealt with the business of agriculture, but also lived there and didn't want to see anything wrong though.
On that, I was...
Oh, yes, our level plans this year.
Okay. So I think, um, certainly we don't have ag areas within, uh, town limits, but we have a lot of lawns and a lot of people who put in some lawns that end up in the water and algae booms, vet tons, all those sorts of things. So I think here back, we really need that, um, at the area of, of course, we need to look at issues like stormwater management and all this, lawn maintenance coming up at the town council, which, uh, I hope you'll refer us first and so we can weigh in on it. Um, but, uh, so I applaud you for your interest and ask you to really take in ways that you can use, not only your personal interest and making, um, bringing your expertise to their priorities as well.
Well, I just, I haven't seen you in your department commission or, or council bringing policy of the local, uh, to your activities that are going on or...
I...
Is your first town meeting?
I have not been involved, no, with any of the, I mean, I confess that my schedule is a lot more flexible this year than it had been at any time passed typically, especially this time of year. I wouldn't be here until about eight or nine o'clock at night at work, so I'd have to apologize. I am a lot more flexible now. Um, so no, I, I haven't joined in any volunteer program in the town or been at any meetings so far.
I just, did you hear about other things, what Kelly's telling you about the planning different, how you participate in community, like next door or anything other?
Uh, me and my wife, uh, the baby.
Well, follow up on the next question. So the works of planning commission, there's a lot of different kinds of things, and I love the way it's, to the council and that can have to be really modern, some of them are really, they're interesting, forward thinking and looking into the future and that, you know, what we need to count on, to, to, and our, and some of the problems like that. So, uh, it's a mix of different kinds of things, I'm just wondering if where you see yourself or where you're serious fitting into that sort of effect from that type of thing.
So you have, you're asking if, uh, I'm more interested in one of the, like, one or more of those items in the whole background? So, and we have committees and, and so forth, and we have a committee on, on the advocacy, we have, uh, policy and, uh, I'm just wondering if you have any other interests in one of the kinds of... Well, I mean, policy of course, uh, and if there is any kind of committee or any kind of activity on the future, you mentioned that definitely would be a great one.
Okay, here's my, uh, part of my question, sort of, to, uh, have you had expectations of always coming?
It wouldn't be called the job if it was always coming to me.
Well, nobody told me so.
Uh, the dealings I've dealt with as a manager, uh, and as a territory manager now, you know, it's not always black and white, so you've got to kind of take the, the cards that you're dealt. In other words, it's not always fun, but you got to, and you got to find a solution to make a decision.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing I have is, uh, some breezy stuff. Uh, I cannot, uh, uh, soon as the first question runs in, uh, I enjoy the background of the album, two decades, and I'm kind of sharing a lot of things where, uh, if you could give me some insight, probably can leverage, uh, your background and try to do a little bit of insight on things like that.
I think the closest insight I give you, my background would be with stormwater or any kind of, uh, territories, you know, that's, you know, I'm involved with the Chesapeake Bay Act as a future mission planner. I'm certified in Virginia and Maryland, so, so anything to do with over fertilization or unhealthy soil, the likes of, uh, natural habitat, bamboo, uh, also falls in that line. So, uh, as far as my background goes, that's where I can come.
And that was my question, was that, um, are it all been very closely monitored closely to the Chesapeake Bay Act as a moving decision here? Do you see any conflict of interest in their current position in that regard? I, um, when I read your resume, I guess my first, I thought I interpreted that you were selling fertilizer.
I, I do sell, but I also limit. So I, I can be my own worst enemy sometimes, but I get paid for both. Uh, most of the time, people aren't going to overpay for something that they don't have to. Those are people that've been in that industry a long time. Those, those who do not or not familiar with it and they have a lawn and just throw it out there too much, that's typically where the problem lies anyway, so, Virginia.
I'm thinking more along the lines of your employer's position in regards to...
There's no conflict there.
Okay. Excuse me, I, I pondered what you said about improvements in form of, and comparing explore, um, having lots, do you see any improvements that we found?
I have, uh, I've noticed some construction work back here, uh, behind Dents, Dentsy Street. So I, I know there's probably backgrounds, there's probably improvements going on in the background that I'm, that I may have mentioned, something maybe pretty, pretty.
I can give it a more straight. And, um, so that's on the point, clearly. So, uh, we have several districts in Colonial Beach towards the class, um, wanting, um, downtown areas. You'll get in the, in part of this job in the planning commission is to be familiar with outdoor awareness and to be familiar with our company and the plan, and what we can happen of, of those. And while at least they're having the confidence, their awareness of all that and, um, a lot of your education will come from those documents. As it seems, as though you might be quite novice, uh, to what we do and how we do it. And that's fine, because this is a learning process for anybody that joins and that's why we have the, the extension program and that hall and everybody that has ever joined it's always just, we're publicly, you know, it's a, and it's fine that the town, so we'll help educate you also in your, and, um, once you have those documents and, um, you become more familiar, you know, part time, it will come more natural on some of these questions for us, you know, um, yeah, thanks. Are there any other questions please? All right, I think we're on ice. We have a motion to, um, recommend, okay?
So move.
Second?
Sorry.
Any further discussion?
No, I was just hoping you'd hear him say, well, we couldn't monitor next door or things on our Facebook page. That's what got you interested in, in having a member.
Are, are the two subcommittees you have are a policy which deals with the council plan and other policies they offer by law, which is, um, Mr. Parker, uh, chairs of act committee and then Pam and Aaron, uh, chair of the outreach committee, which we have on Facebook, there's James, there's Pam, and we, uh, there's a partner for, uh, but now I think we're more than... Uh, this panel to the vote. Mr. Nelson, and Steve Music?
Aye.
Mr. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Dalton?
Aye.
Mr. McCabe?
Aye.
Chair of the vote, aye. Look at you, the town council act, um, we recommend a favorable proposal and they're more related to the fact later. Okay, thank you very much.
I, um, since he's not going to have an appointment, that would be a meeting if, when he, if I met, would be, would be, if he's not meeting.
Okay, three people.
That he would be.
Oh, he would be on. Uh, you guys trust in him? Um, I technically not.
I'm just sort of, you know, good, you're doing one on one here. It's, it's also within the range of...
That's correct, that's actually like to have it before he... Okay. I think that's a good idea. Uh, so I had asked, uh, Mr. McCabe to, uh, start a, sort of, a, a, a learning with Mr. Robertson, because he's brand new, so, uh, maybe after the meeting, we can get together and find a time that would work for the three of you to, and regardless of the decision of how we'll, we'll, we'll... No, I lost my, I checked everything. I want to pull my papers.
Who's here?
Thank you. Next up, committee report. Uh, let's hear from the, uh, Congress.
Um, certainly a large report, except that we probably have a dozen people in the last month that have found the planning, mentioned Facebook page, they've got new views and, um, uh, of course, next door, still posted in, I was late getting them posted, I was late. I kept pulling up, telling me on the page, it didn't show me that the packet was there, but I finally called yesterday, so, um, I wonder if they'll be able to, I just put the vote in that way, so.
Well, it's not on the council page, it's actually on the county commission page, so...
Yes, but I mean, it's on the, um, council hall, um, website. It was on the website, so. And then it's been issued, so.
And after this meeting, maybe we can post a link to the...
Yeah, I would love to do that.
I, I think that we need 12 subscribers in order to get our own sort of, uh, YouTube URL, that's, uh, you may break ours, right, and, and, so, um, let's try and get subscribers to the thing.
Um, my understanding that council's going to take up C I P, I hope that you have any questions that might, or I can assist you, because, um, the only thing I want to say is we received their request from the school this year and I just redid whatever they had and they did not comply to our request to participate. So my concern is I hope their budget does not be like capital improvements as well as ours. Because in state law, there's supposed to be a report of us, that's what we're...
And that may be exciting to reach out to, um, Mr. Altrich, that he is the school board leader of the council, he may be able to help us learn the, um, R P I P. And then, uh, last year, we gave a, uh, presentation on the C I P where we went, sort of, you know, a little bit of background on and how the process works and then went, I don't know, because it was the first year that we had really done a, a process with it, um, that, that again. And so it's, with the council, we knew we not had heard that presentation last year. That was why it really wanted to, um, you know, to present it in that fashion again, it's just a PowerPoint that we go through and give a good opportunity to give some questions. You know, if that's in the council's interest to have that in our work session, it takes 15 minutes.
Well, we have a work. We have a work session scheduled for tomorrow, of course, and I think we're pretty, maybe not, pretty full. Um, and it's pretty short, but certainly the next work session, I don't see probably putting that, putting that on there.
Well, um, it is our, Adrian, you get a copy of this schedule, the work sessions before we hit anyways, so, uh, you keep that in mind and then give me a little bit of a heads up, just here, I actually updated from last year to, because you're C I P, but other than that, I was probably...
Well, we did, we did have our first read of it, you have to be like, last, uh, last week.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, we'll get that over with.
It's a work session tomorrow?
Yes.
Can we make a thing of it?
Oh, you're asking me to tell it six o'clock? Yeah. Yeah. I don't know, right? I think we've all started.
Okay. If you have any further questions, apart with, um, bringing, uh, the, if you got any further questions for that, we also, it is a little bit difficult that we can't meet three, which is people, because it is a formal meeting, so, um, you can do that, so, it's normally, um, you're the ones you have, you know, have had a run through. Next up is our public hearing for our House of Representatives. Uh, this time I'd like to, um, I'll have you read the.
I don't have the staff.
You don't have a staff report or?
Yeah, just because you all were kind of ones that were.
Sure. Okay, I'll give a little bit of introduction before we open it for a public comment. The housing chapter is in addition to our comprehensive plan. It is a candid document, uh, addition to content that we didn't talk before. It was written, um, with the assistance of the land studios and the zoning department. And then reviewed by us, it was linked into council where, uh, it was a public hearing that had questions that had not come up during our review. And it was sent back to us for a re-review. In that time, we recreated a subcommittee of citizens and.
We tried.
We tried, we could. We had a meeting for any permission members. And, uh, as they reviewed the document, they confirmed, uh, statistical data. And then, um, also added a, um, front statement of intent and explanation page. And then we also added definitions further because there were several terms within the document that are maybe not, uh, general terms to a public. Not where it'd be good to help clarify that. So now this is our public hearing for that amended housing chapter. Is there any, um, public comments, oh, open the public comment. Six oh five. Alright, we'll close public comments in. At this point, we will initiate, uh, any further discussion we have. Are we going to vote?
Um, I had someone ask me if, um, some of the statistics in here had been, um, clarified as far as, uh, there was a referral to the housing, total housing projects in town. Being, um, occupied. And I don't feel that they are now. Are we, I mean, we're concerned about, kind of, type of, um, um, pieces here and drift. Or I.
You know, one of the things I brought up was, you know, the moment you, the ink dries on any of these stats, it's going to, so. I think in general, I know, uh, the chair verified independently a lot of the information. Or not, the waiting list is big, small, or how it exists and probably doesn't materially change anything. And one of the other things that I mentioned, uh, we discussed at last meeting was, you know, before any, any major project or any kind of redevelopment proposal is considered, we want to have updated stats. So decisions are made with the most frequent or most up-to-date information possible.
And that point was brought up a better, um, but I think as of currently, there may be a, I think it's, there actually did basically also look like a, um, which is common. But there, there are like, people on the waiting list with a senior. Yeah. And there were some people on yours that were asking about, I think there's, you know, 12th street. And, uh, whether there were, they were working there on 4th and 10th and kind of. But I, we see on 6th street going by, there are people who are, are, um, they are here, they appear.
Yeah, they had a sign up, I mean, they ran by me the other day and it said, take you out.
Oh, okay, good.
That's what I was guessing.
Well, I know there was a big push in, or the last call, Phil, they can see the 12th street, so.
Yeah, I think that might just be the title they call it though. Uh, at this time, um, there needs to be, but in the past and throughout my, like, stand here, it was a terrible. So I think it's the conclusion, yeah, whether I think it's today or tomorrow, don't necessarily. Good point.
Um, is there any other, I'd like to, uh, comment on, uh, definitions or going down and back here. I think they'll help understanding the whole picture that we're trying to present. And people who don't understand early will look back and see definitions. I think that's valuable.
I think that was your idea.
Can you do?
Well, I just hope like any document presented, that's just not ever was terms that were. Well, and there are further terms, I mean, there are so many terms to define. I mean, we're just, let's take the ones that are, um, we're most obvious to define. But there's, don't even work that title, uh, whole chapter like that. So we need further discussion. And then.
No.
No?
Yes, yeah.
The very church line, I think they should have made it from.
Words.
The word of.
The Calum.
Yes.
Sorry, my mother. We will make, so our Calum.
Did she read this?
It should be professor instead of plural. And, um, my mother called. Do I have, um, a bunch of things to do? Now, these, I'm sorry, I was, these definitions just go there. There's old practice. They are right. Uh, they are about there. So they're right at the beginning, they're not straight, but it's right. Any other? Our, what's the name of it? We're recommending, recommending them for Calum.
Whereas the Colonial Beach Planning Commission finds that comprehensive plan is a convenience general well care and for zoning practice could be served by the recommending approval of comprehensive plan amendment zero one dash two zero one seven. Amendments to housing section, section six of chapter one of the comprehensive plan. Now therefore be it resolved that the Colonial Beach Planning Commission hereby recommends approval of CPA dash zero one dash two zero one seven. And forwards the plan to the town council with favorable recommendation in accordance with fifteen point two dash two two zero zero of the code of Virginia. One nine five oh and recommended.
Mr. McCabe, can I? Aye. Alfred. Aye. Mr. Robertson.
Hi.
Hi.
If you have any questions on that one, I'll go again. I think there's a lot for us on this late right now. Alright, next up, the session on the vacant property study of the Ball Field. Before you read the paper, I just want the audience, um, in the video. To state that we were asked to review several vacant town and properties, uh, for specified use. And, uh, this is the last one, which right now we started, um, with, we started with the old school, um, property. And then to the vacant, uh, buildings that are John Tier Law and Hard Irving. See a parking lot in central four blocks, uh, on Wilder Street, down the hill. Uh, and. Which was others' interest. Town.
What was that one, they won?
They were not recording either.
Okay.
We, they, but I know. What we have reviewed. Okay. Shoot, okay.
Alright, so, um, this property study again, this is Ball Field property. Uh, property consists of ten lots, it grew up at fifty by hundred fifty, but it currently is a residential general R two. Uh, staff reviewed the property and identified the following options for potential, uh, use. Uh, option one is selling the property as is, um, I guess over four, zone R two, subsidized into ten lots. Uh, option two is rezoned and sell, now that the rezoned property will affect the residential residential. Option three, uh, would be to sell the property or memory and understand, have, have developed memory and understanding itself apartment based on that understanding. Um, staff recommends option two, if sale this property is very time sensitive, colonial beach needs to sell this car, colonial school needs to sell this property to pay for demolition in the old elementary school. And to help pay off, uh, a new elementary school. The town rezones the old elementary schools commercial residential as recommended by the planning commission. It would be a smooth transition for the Ball Field to be rezoned commercial residential as well. Um, this would be beneficial in many ways, it would give developers more options, it would help sell the property at a faster rate. It will also encourage mixed use development, beneficial for the environment, the walkability and more diverse environment. Furthermore, it will increase commercial development pro, uh, possibilities in colonial beach, which will help increase the economic base. Uh, if this option were to be pursued, the comprehensive plan would also have to be amended of future lane use for the property, green space. Plan will have to be amended to reflect commercial residential gaming. Would file a future lane use could be historic, resort commercial, if it's commercial residential, some properties in the area that are identified as historic, resort commercial.
So you are recommending that we read the minutes for sale. This already has the, so, it already has a contract or pending contract with Coldwell Banker to, to write it for sale.
Yes, we, we, um, we reached out to Coldwell Banker just recently and, uh, requested that they develop a, you know, list price for the properties for sale, the school properties, including the water tower. And for purchases, uh, estimating at this time, we suggested that we do use commercial residential, understanding that it has not changed as of yet. But just to give the ball, we, we have recommended, we could have, and thanks.
For the session?
What would a M O U look like? Um, I mean, I don't, I don't know exactly, I mean, it would just be like memory and understanding, kind of like what the town has with this, sell the property. But it would, it's kind of like what we were talking about with the northernly properties, that's where I would, like, add, which some of those properties we recommended that if you would sell them, you would sell the memory and understanding that property would, so to say. It would just be more certain, but it would keep certain notes to that and that. So there was a condition was being had conditioned on it, but it would.
So the understanding of selling these properties is that that money, those, for the school building, like, pay this for the issue.
That's what, that's what the, uh, last time council actually had.
Okay, I, I missed that.
Yeah.
It's going forward, yeah.
Correct.
And part of the, you know, um, uh. Um, but we, uh, maybe what the nation's changed to zoning for the school properties. Um, for the same, that was, that was directed with the fact that, you know, you could see any more art, uh, children's town for play. And this was a what, this was considered a part, one of our parts. So we're going to be eliminating art area. Uh, and my question is, should that now be considered, if we're going to sell this, if we're selling, selling this art? We're eliminating our open space again, which gives more opportunities. Personally, I think it may force this, to sell this property and rezonate to go with the school property that needs enforcement. I think that's better sale attraction, that's sure. But it also offers, such as Brian, what has been done, or if you're looking at other parks, it's going to still look, you know, market driven.
It's really one.
Residential. And, but again, we're eliminating another part, open space for the town. And do you need to, I know, he has a, um, land commission made a recommendation to pass down four years ago how to sell. And the policy, they're deciding overturn that, uh, or didn't accept that recommendation. Do you need to raise this issue that we're, yeah, a little. I have a, I'm very, I'm very torn. Yeah, I have a comment for that, but I want to go ahead and get, um, very, I'm like, it's a comment.
I'm looking at it off now. Well, I, I will say that that property, uh, walking property is, uh, it would have special potential in colonial beach to house. Good access to, uh, to people in the ballpark, in all parts of town, and all these are essentially located to be, um, commercial, et cetera, some would. Um, or it could be a good residential development. They, if there are views, they, I will, I will remember and convey. So it actually is a great potential spot for, um, we've been commercial.
And, uh, do you have any comments?
Just because I'm, you know, I'm curious, ballpark, figure how much, uh, what would we get for how much that, uh?
I'm, I'm.
It was all speculative, I understand that. So we, we talked about it, like, we drafted a number.
I, I can, I can share with you, if you don't mind, that that letter number, sure, on the bond for the school is somewhere in the neighborhood, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the next one year.
That's it, that's for us.
That's, yeah, that's for us, one interest on every year. It'll be eight point five million dollars on the off the hand.
And, and to be clear, also, I think the school, they estimate their cost C D, it will affect the tune of the bond on the counter. Whether it's still also, in turn around, there, there, and the demo in which, um, I'm saying the insurance place not headed, you know, nobody, no, looking at it for Albert, you're not sure, okay, because we do, we're, we're. But, um, so there's several things to.
And, and it's probably saying also, I'm just running a thought, but not kind of, you know, so, you know, there. Does that's on top of the main thing, so we have still get.
But, but one of your talk, one of your talking about is nothing to do with that, oh, right, bond is a standard loan that, that the town is taking on five, you know. And those, I'm looking for more education.
Sure. This is the, uh, there really could be a whole lot of pictures of those parts, but, um, but there, uh, you. The agreement that happened with school or town, what is that, um, in order to go with school, the town or? In order to go with the school, the town would help pay for the farm. And then the school board would give the town, the big, the property to him to challenge or himself or whatever. But that is all legally binding, I think, agreements between the school board and the town. There's, in some sense, I mean, the school basically has an option to not sell it. And because the school is really within some of the positions that they are. The whole point was to give me the order to sell. Possible for us to write and not do that, I feel like. That was really what I hope.
Yeah, there's, there's new stuff to the.
Is there any, did you say built with no value at this point, but that to the school, the old school property or what is sale for?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Do we have a value or a sales price for this?
No, that's something we're going to have to determine. The, the old school property with administrative offices over there. We have to determine what the fair market value of that property is. And I've talked to the real estate agent Tony from Coldwell Banker the other day. He suggested the best way to do that would probably be to determine what are the costs to, to build the structure and then depreciate it accordingly. Based on the age of the building and then try to back into a number that way. Eric, you may have a better idea, have a one good suggestion to determine how best to put value on that building property.
So we're talking about the one in the ballpark.
We're talking about the property where the administrative office in the garden.
The old apartment.
Office.
Oh, I'm sorry, were there in the house? Yeah. Well, I mean, either way, not even a financial property comes, it's not that much there. But I'd like to just mention for a second, um, just as, as a, my, X, Y, or X, K, S. These ten lots, these, these, each lot is semi-cut and square, I'm not probably. Ball field lot. Each lot, you could think of very roughly, I think, seven, seventy-five thousand. So we're going to add seven-five thousand, ten, um, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You know, maybe to take that and, and that approximately.
Well, we, 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 I hope you're going to leave, you mentioned that you could get somebody to do it very well to start one of those numbers like that. You call.
Yeah, and I think it's really the agent that was better for us than your dad, uh, not.
Just as you mentioned, you rather than.
Yeah, she's well organized, you know, and the local broker, but she, um, I think, you know, she doesn't do as much commercial work and the guy is kind of working the main part of it.
Salem, Tony Salem?
No, he, there's another agent that works with Tony in private, where I mean.
I've worked in there more.
I've, I've met him, but I sure won't, sorry. But he'll be, um, you know. All that will be your, when you're contacting locals, I think will be, um, real. I, before, before we go back there, I want to, um, make a comment that, um. I think that it has been, um, my first opinion many times. Part of the reason why I, why I participate in doing on the planning commission to consider the long-term future of going to be a state or a person. And the fact that I am a director and be only, you know, resident, like we're in the school, like that school and baseball and that all the other kids. Um, all the way through and turn back around a little bit, well, some of the children, probably, I think. And, um, or back then, or anyway. Um, I think this will be offensive topic for many residents in town. I think there's an understanding that we want to benefit in breaking part of the bond, the instability. So with that in mind, I think that many of us over the, we want whatever we have to do in order to benefit at once. And that's going to be very near the end of the year, the farmers pressure is going to be a lot higher. However, also, I believe that open space is very interesting. This also means that to our children, the variations that I may have will come after me. So I am in support of the school and I am also in support of Parkland. I am going to go along with option two. However, it would be my recommendation that we add as a planning commission a, the thought to council. To recommend that there may be some sort of idea that when that property gets sold, that as staff have recommended, that there be more extensive. Of park facility in the classic shores region of Flunney Beach. There's a complaint, it needs to be expanded over there. We have a very large population with zero parks in that area. And the bike path that is there, I mean, that's rattle in the last ten years. So if you're going to take away a facility in which provides a place for little league or soccer or adults to play flag football on. Um, it's been a day for the last, since I was born and before. Then it would be very important to consider that when this is sold, there needs to be a plan in place to expand part of the, someone else. And then you can go separately to get on that, you know, that classic sort of agent is the place to do it. Because then you have only going to be a greater material and there is a enormous amount of property that has not been developed and that could be in our experience. Or if it's in a long form, or however it is developed, it's like that, maybe having some soccer post on the side of it. Or maybe it, you know, can just be developed in a recreation trail, just on that.
Yeah, going along with that, P, that, you know, Pam's concern about losing green space. I think it's worth while to remind ourselves that the complaint in the language says we're already inefficient. Based on acceptable community standards of population of green space. And what I fear is we make a decision about that property, this property up here. And I, I too support it being commercial residential, given where it is and the skies of it and all that. And I think if we make all these decisions in vacuum without stepping back and looking at what we're doing with our open space. Uh, that, that all should be considered holistically. So when you look at what are we going to do with Eleanor Park, we're going to sell that. What are we going to do with that old school property? We're going to sell that. What are we going to do with it? It goes on and on and on. And then we're going to wake up one day and there's no space left for parks or recreation. So what I would do, what we've done with the housing chapter, and it's up to council is to can reinforce that notion that, hey. We can't, that's make, make, make decisions to sell everything. Because, no, not going to, because it's, so.
I'd like to support it, but first of all, I think the placement of the area is key to that. That, um, I mean, I have to say, I regret seeing people gathering there. Kids gathering there because there's not a lot of traffic. I mean, if you safeguard our kids a lot more because of this recent park that is in housing and commercial. It is, yeah, I know. And I'm saying that it's in the top place for the people that surround it. It's a very difficult decision. I know, I'm unaware of the amount of money that we have spent. I mean, I'm, I'm well with forty, fifty plus. But this is in the perfect middle of residents of that area. It's very long. And that's why I, I hesitate on saying that, yes, we could get the housing in there. But I do have a hesitation because, um, the park there by the beach at the point needs a lot of repair. And you sell something in this area, we're, we're cutting green space totally.
Well, there is the town, um, Del, which is quite a bit of, I mean, I'm just saying, if we're using the on the map. Uh, you know, there, it's not recreational space in the sense that it's not a sports field. And it doesn't provide any of those types of amenities to residents. Um, so there's a different type of, I agree.
Uh, well, I'm on the board of the foundation. We, like, I had a conversation recently about ways to make the community center become a vibrant place for young people to recreate. There is a ball field there. Uh, we talked about doing other kinds of activities, like for example, uh, in law or in tax equality or something like that. To be a desirable place for kids to hang out. And hey, I fully understand and it's sort of dismayed by the fact that there's not that many things for young people to do. Too many places to do, so I'm totally supporting, in support of the idea that. This particular property seems to me though to be the one that's run by the law field team. Of all the properties that the town has to sell, one of the more desirable ones, but most desirable ones in town, so it seems without hesitating. Uh, without hesitation would be the one called the boardwalk and the treasures, the old town hall, something like that. I mean, there's seem, as far as I know, no controversy about the property at all. So, uh, but anyway, I think the ballpark field is, uh, is one of a few places where people to, um, do recreation.
I agree. Well, and really the long term of what we got to see is that there be a huge piece in our bills, whether it can not be in that location. That, that can't have much better action, um, potentially. But I wanted to second, the idea of prioritizing the making plan that we are looking to make money from, such as sales. And they said it is imperative that we have in build in downtown regions of Flunney Beach. Very first and most important thing now are what we have already recommended, the section of Wilder. Right there on the boardwalk in the back twelfth seat. It has no conflict with the residents. Everybody would like to see something there. It would, um, benefit our downtown renovation. Both, all three properties along with Irving that we have recommended for sale to be first. That even the old school next to the town hall should be first before this property is considered. And then maybe this should also be a next factor though. But, you know, it's sort of interesting that the town keeps going to other properties to try to sell instead of focusing on this core. And developing this core here. And that, you know, we seem to, as a planning commission, continually reiterate this idea. It's continually missed for somebody that, that those areas, I mean, they're not even in the Coldwell Banker contract. The section of the Wilder parking lot isn't even in it. And, and that seems prime, prime place, we're going to give some money. All right, I know it's a playground that's income generating, but there's a huge sector of it that still would be income generating, a whole other half of it. We did not recommend.
Right, I mean, if, um, you hear it over and over, business, business, business to, um. Diversify tax base, not going to put a business at Eleanor. Not going to put a business problem up on, on the hill here. But maybe, you know, it's going to help hotel to come in and want to do a conference or something like that. But if we're looking at business in town, those sort of properties, as you pointed out, that would be priority.
It seems to me that there's some low hanging fruit that we seem to be just ignoring and wanting to reach up to.
Exactly.
The most difficult.
It's right there.
If I could just share something real quick here. There, there is to my knowledge, no Coldwell, Coldwell Banker contract for sale. We went out with an RFP a year from work now. And we've been vacillating ever since and not been able to get anything listed. We've been going back and forth for whatever reason, questions from, questions from the broker, questions from the town, back and forth. At any rate, so the property we're talking about now, two properties we're referring to as school properties. Are being referred to as school properties because the school specifically asked us to fail, to sell those properties. They were school properties and they asked us to sell them so that we could generate funding to pay for the school. So that's why these have jumped off of this. It's not because we think these are the best properties to sell. They jumped to the top of this because they were school properties, the school asked us to sell the properties in order to help pay for their new school.
Well, I, I think I've seen there, I've been never meeting on that. I'm totally aware of the, the, we actually sell that, but the town was interested in finding property before the school burned down. So if they are interested in it and we have been asking recommendations on it, how does it two years ago? For these other properties and then the other properties are not listed in the RFP to be considered for sale. And it is quite interesting that they are not picking the lowest proof.
The RFP lists no properties at all, that I understand. I read the RFP, it's like six pages long. And it just very generally asks the successful offer to assist the town in selling various properties. We didn't, we didn't give them a whole range or a notebook of properties to sell. So we can insert, uh, we can engage Co-Rub this one, to list whatever properties we want to have this.
Again, because I'm new, are we running it at that deficit, on budget? Is that reasonable in terms of your information for the school? But as a whole, will this, does it mean us, oh, you know, we're running it about this?
I, I don't know the answer to that this year. My guess is that we are going to have to come up with additional revenues this year in order to meet obligations.
We have not yet.
We have not, we have not come up with the, like, twenty eighteen, um, budget. My guess is however, that we will need, um, we would need additional revenues, but I don't know that for a fact.
So is Coreful letting you suggest that?
We have not.
More probable.
We're only one year into the bond. Bond initially, it was like the first year of the bond, and I'm going by memory now, it's somewhere like, uh, over a quarter of a million dollars. And then the next year it goes up to three hundred and some thousand. And it stays relatively constant for the next, you know, eighteen, nineteen years, whatever, at about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And I've got that admiration stat, well, I shared it, amazing, one of the.
I, I have on Facebook, on Facebook, or FaceTime, it's next door, something like.
Does additional liability, now she do not deserve, you know, the, 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 at all?
But when we consider other, other expenses, I believe, I believe so. But when we consider other, other expenses, I believe, I believe so. Like, um, again, uh, this is my first time council and I need to look at the, see what the budget requests are. They shared nobody's.
When does that typically happen?
Uh, we got a schedule. I think we've got, uh, in April.
It happens.
April.
So we'll know within, pretty sure soon whether or not, um, the necessity for sale.
I, I think it's pretty, pretty certain. I mean, we're going to need to sell the property. You know, it's not going to sell quite right away. I mean, or it's not going to sell within the next, uh, couple of months. It's probably not going to sell until the next year. But, uh, we, we need to get the process. I think if we're seriously selling it at all, we need to get the process started. We've been just chasing our tail on this thing for too long.
Which right there is a fair amount of profits. Um, at this point, those are far away from the target.
And I'm just trying to figure out if, if we're going to sell, or we're running that figure.
I think there's a lot of theater involved in the barn and a lot of theater being in the barn. And what is going to come from the majority of our budget, those to, 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 um, I mean, that's bigger than this one. So when you get the budget for this year, though, that will be, I mean, it will change and then the priorities will change. Now, the, uh, interesting part of the field property is that it doesn't require to report, um, capital improvement. And so the capital, the P I T, we want to, you know, right in, um, right now. Um, very importantly, you know, in those, um, a lot of, um, we could add the main resource for accomplishing those goals. That is one of what we're considering there. Um, so, and things like the pool are part of the P I T. And they, the sale of the property is, is allocated to help fund the P I T.
If you look at our capital improvement plan, and I'm going by memory now, like that, the, uh, kind of like seven of the six to seven of the highest ranking priorities. Five to six or six to seven are all being funded by, in part or whole, a sale of property. That's how, that's how, we're, I think we're property rich in, in our cash flow.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out the version that you.
Well. I move that we.
All right. So, um, at this time, we can move to discussion on.
Right now, COVID.
Well, we can move to table it for our next meeting. We have, um, maybe been a copy of the project and also maybe a little bit more time on, um, missions. And any questions that have come up from this?
Well, I was, um, the busy issue at hand is just recently.
Issue at hand is are we going to pick an option from one side of our own options, uh, to recommend to?
I personally.
Go ahead. And I assume it is to agree with some of the. It's on the agenda is the discussion on fracking. Um, you want to give a background on that?
Um, I don't have anything prepared, but, um, basically town council, um, at their last meeting, um, um, voted on a resolution to pass the planning commission, uh, to remove the oil and gas wells and drilling the work of the two hundred and five. In the sense to, um, help enforce the town, and the town council, um, support, uh, not fracking.
So this is, those are the zoning norms updated line. However, we do not have funding in any property within the town's planning, which is don't in line. So we have a zoning ordinance for this district, and regulations for that district make it, you know, like, it's the old current.
Um, I'd like to also add that I, in your package, I included, um, a, you should have a red line, uh, three versions of the agricultural agreement. The reason for that is, is, well, the, the first one that says updated on November twenty fifteen, that is what is currently enforceable, right now, that's what the town has. Um, there is a red line document, and then the other document that is a clean public, red line document. That, those are actually agricultural, um, district recommendations that were made by the planning commission back in, uh, twenty fifteen, I believe. Um, those actually, uh, they, they were put on the list for the town council back in twenty fifteen. Somehow, I think the brewery ordinance got ahead of them, and they just kind of got lost. Um, so those recommendations are actually on current town council's, um, agenda, well, not agenda, I'm sorry. They're a list of things that the town, that the planning commission recommended in the draft for the town council as well. Those also have already been advertised by the planning commission back in twenty fifteen. So no advertising necessary for those. Um, but as far as the agricultural or else are oil and drilling, that aspect, that particular part of, let's say, twenty seventeen, that number, that fabric, that's what they have to be, react, or just react to this topic.
We would have to go through the whole process here and.
Well. You would only, yeah, I mean, you would have to do a whole public hearing just for, for the oil and drill. But I just wanted you all to see what else was proposed. And what I was planning on doing, which they sent you to the town council, the two different advertised, one of which was the first one, um, for, basically, a bunch of different, uh, amendments. And then the other one would be oil and drill, you know, as well, for that as well. And that was created a combined document.
So this red line doesn't have a oil and drill amendment? This is just the edited document that we did to your town?
Correct.
And that, um, never was, was never counted, okay, it was never brought to, or.
And, and the only difference between that, like, if we were to combine them, the only difference would be, I mean, the oil and drill one is very simple, it's literally just mixing that particular.
If we do a head of this and have this on for public comment at our next meeting, then will, if they afford all the money, because they have quite a bit on their, anyway, would they be able to advertise all of the changes that once finished, when our price would be?
I, I would say that, I, I would say so.
I think it's reasonable, yeah.
But do you think it's likely this could be taken up ahead of next?
How it won't be taken up at the next council meeting?
We, we should. Right. I thought it was.
You can worry about this until we hold a public hearing.
Yes. I'm talking about, I'm talking about. The original, the original. The original one, I'm not sure. But, but we can serve it overall. Sure, because it makes sense, because we're in a lot of buying, I think, we have.
Because it saves on time, I think.
Yeah, and really, I mean, there's nothing that I'm talking about. I mean, I, I really get that, that it's, it's super best.
So the thought is that we shouldn't take the simple level of pay or stuff, and then, and, and not do the other stuff.
I think so, because it will still take a, a public, you know, advertising of listing at our next meeting, and then a month after that, and then, and then, or, 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 I mean, realistically, by the time they get it back, and get it to the public, all that, so, uh, they are funded, they're going, I mean, they're, they're, right now, is, while it is a hot topic right now in the media, for the town of Colonial Beach, it's not going to be a big deal or stretch. So, um, I think they're looking at, the town will be able to hold it on, 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 towards the process.
We're really, I agree with that. Do we have a public hearing the next meeting next? It's, it's.
So the public hearing is only two, three, five, five, they're like.
Because we've already done public hearing.
Other types.
But I think if you guys, you have three, eight, nine, ten, I mean.
Remember what we did two years ago.
Yeah, like, they have them, they're, they're, I know, I know. Yeah.
This is one of the last cameras, that's, that's, that I, that I.
They were, they might be a good idea for us to, um, also, would all be able to have things like, like, of, of.
But if we touch, um, anything else, would we have to have another?
We'd have to re-advertise. Do you wanna hold up even further than? I know, I mean, Cap, are you, it's probably gonna be upset if it takes some time in order to get to this issue.
That would be, that would be.
Okay.
So you wanna hold up on the other one?
Until we have our, I have, I need work on.